All right, good afternoon, everyone. We will go ahead and call the district board. And before we do that, we have our pastor of New Haven Baptist Church, Brother James Roberts, with us. He's kind of new to the area. He's been here since July, so I would want to welcome him. And thank you for coming. If everybody will stand, we'll have the word spread.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you today for your goodness to us. Thank you for all the good things, the Word. God tells us all good things come from you. We're thanking for that today. Most of all, we thank you for the Lord Jesus Christ coming to this earth and died for our sins. Through and by Him, we have eternal life. So we thank you for that. Father, we thank you for government. We know that leadership is appointed by you. And there's nothing like good, godly leadership. And so we thank you for that today as well. Father, we do pray for our leadership. We lift them up too. We pray, God, that you would give them wisdom in making decisions. And, God, that you would guide their fall process. And we pray that you'd give them grace and keep them steady. We love you now again, and we thank you for all the goodness that you've given to us. Father, bless this day, I pray. Lead, guide, and direct, in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you remain standing, we'll do the pledge allegiance and almighty faith of the leaders. Attention, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next thing on our agenda is the call of the roll. We'll do a chairman of the chair person for chair. And after that, we'll do the pro team, and then we'll go on into the agenda.
Bowlen.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Betchum.
Here.
Carson.
Here.
Chadwell.
Chambers.
Here.
Day.
Here.
Gray. Here. David Jeffers.
Here.
Jared Jeffers.
Here.
Lyles. Lauren.
Here.
Slaven.
Here.
Strumpf.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. So first thing on our agenda is the election of the chairperson. So at this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for the chair of the board.
I'll nominate Mayor Tibbs.
Second.
Motion, second. Mr. Tibbs, any others? If not, then I entertain a motion that we cease nominations and he be elected by acclamation.
Motion.
Motion, or your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll come back to the chair.
Next on the agenda is the former chairperson pro team. I'll entertain a motion to cease nominations for the chairman pro team.
I'll nominate Mike Slaven. Second.
Any other nominations? No, I entertain a motion to cease nominations.
Motion.
Second.
Second, blue day.
Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda, item number four. I'm going to be out of number three. Item number four is approval of minutes from the previous meeting on August 20th, 2018. To both in your package. Any changes, discussion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Day.
Second.
Commissioner Jeffers. Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda, item number four is approval of minutes from the previous meeting on August 20th, 2018. To both in your package. Any changes, discussion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Day.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Brown. Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, item number six, on the agenda, the financial reports. Those are all monthly from county clerk, trustee, and finances. Has two months of your sitting by email, and starting next month. Those will be, they're done in summary form, but for the books, you will also still be given in your digital format, and you've received their emails. I would entertain a motion to put the financial report strictly.
Make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Slaven.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Strumpf. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the, item number seven, school matters. Did anybody represent a school? I do not see anyone. So we'll move right on to the sheriff's report. Anyone from the sheriff's department? Moving right along. Next is road matters.
I don't have anything that you want. Have any questions?
Seeing no questions for Mr. King, we'll move on. Next on item number 10 is time for the general public. If anyone has any concerns or any other issues they'd like to bring upon the county commissioner's house. Uh...
Yeah, I'd just like to introduce myself.
Next body, state your name.
My name is Carol Agney, and I'm from Clay County. I'm a certified public accountant. I'm actually running for the Tennessee State House of Representatives here in District 38. Scott County is on the end of our district, and I decided to come up here and introduce myself. If you all would like to talk to me, feel free to stay after this meeting, and I'll be happy to talk to you or answer any questions. So thanks for letting me speak.
You're welcome. Thank you. No one else? Item number 11 is the committee reports and resolutions, which we had no reports, so because we didn't have committees at this point. So this time, we'll be going through the committees and have the formal approval of the committees, as we discussed at the workshop. First on the agenda is Parks and Recreation Committee, which you see should be the first one on your list, which states, whereas part of this reorganization, Scott County Board of County Commissioners needs to approve the fullness of internal and statutory committees for the 2018-2022 term. Whereas the Scott County Mayor hereby recommends the following committee and fullness of the commission: Sheila Betchum, David Jeffers, Donnie Bowlen, Chad Markham, Diane Smith, and Sonny Reagan. Now therefore be resolved, if Scott County Board of Commissioners hereby approves these appointments for the 2018-22 term.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Day.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next resolution covers six committees, which are the Emergency Services Committee, Buildings and Grounds Committee, Finance Committee, Intergovernmental Committee, Need Development Committee, Budget Committee. Those have all been outlined, and I think they've been publicized as well. If you see a need for me to do this catch-all type resolution, I will go through the names, but if not, we will just go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Strumpf.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Betchum. Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along. Uh, the next is first, missing change, which I'll read the resolution. Whereas the recent change in first Colonel Scott County Mayor's office or certain administrative performance, which are needed to comply with federal regulations to authorize signature growing grants. And whereas to comply with these regulations and laws, Scott County County Commissioners needs to appoint a Title VI coordinator and a NOSA coordinator and a safety director. And whereas additionally, the county litter recycling coordinator position needs to be filled. And whereas Mary Ann Perdue, who previously served in these positions during employment with Scott County, needs to be replaced. Now therefore be resolved, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby appoints the superintendent, the Title VI coordinator, OSHA coordinator, safety director, and litter recycling coordinator. Further, that the following be appointed as reimbursed with signatures on various grants administered through the Scott County Mayor's office. Myself, Chip Tibbs, Ginger Reynolds, Felicity Hildery, and Jimmy Byrd.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Day. Second by Commissioner Jeffers. Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the airport authority. Whereas this time, there are appointments and reappointments that need to be made to the Scott County Airport Authority Board. And whereas it is recommendation of Authority Airport Board, that the following member will be reappointed to the indicated term, Commissioner Samile off to serve until the end of his term, 2022. And whereas additionally, the airport board recommends the appointment of Jody Morrow to serve on the airport board for the term to end October 1, 2021. Now therefore be resolved, Captain Scott County Board of County Commissioners does hereby reappoint Samile off to serve to above indicated date, and hereby appoints Jody Morrow to serve until 2021 on the Scott County Board Authority, Scott County Airport Authority Board. Sorry.
What about little Brown?
Motion by Commissioner Jeffers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Strumpf. And that is the relationship that Jody, who's in the audience tonight, is also the son of Commissioner Morrow. And he wanted that to be known before he votes that that is his son. But it is a non-paying position, so it should not be your... I appreciate you having that stated. We have the motion in the second, so they can voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next. Whereas the Scott County Board of County Commissioners need to reappoint the beer board to review and act upon beer license applications in the unincorporated areas of Scott County, Tennessee. And whereas the county commissioners Patty Brown, Sheila Betchum, and Jared Jeffers volunteered to serve on the beer board. Now therefore be resolved, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approve the appointment of Patty Brown, Sheila Betchum, and Jared Jeffers to the beer board to serve during the 2018-2022 term. Entertainment a motion, entertain a motion to approve of the list.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Slaven.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Day. Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll be moving on to other matters, which is conducted some of those other matters. But also that, I also have a proclamation that is signed, which is the Scott County proclamation for the office of mayor, so this is a potential awareness month, or has September 2018. I can read that just in front of you, hopefully that time to read through it. We'll entertain a motion to approve. Written.
I'll make the motion.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Second by Attorney Mr. Bowlen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have a late entry. They came in, I think, what, Friday afternoon, Mr. Terry? The roadblock request?
Yes.
We have a roadblock request. It's read, to read, it's a student that may concern. We get E-63 volunteer fire department to like to have a roadblock as one of our annual fundraisers on Saturday, September 29th, 2018. The location of the roadblock will be at the Norma 63 intersection with three set-up points, Norma Road in front of the Ernie Star Shop, and in front of Family Dollar. The time of the roadblock will be from 8 until 1. Proceeding the roadblock towards maintenance of the station and trust and other needs. And the rest of it is just contact information. Any discussion on the roadblock request? If not, on irritation, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, by Commissioner Day.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jeffers. Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have some other matters that need taking care of, and all that, uh, trying to make a...
Okay. The first, you have been provided a copy of a written resolution, as comes our attention within the last couple of weeks. That is to authorize the county to join a class action lawsuit that would be filed in the U.S. Court of Federal Claims. This is in relation to monies that we think the federal government owes the county for payments in lieu of taxes. The county, there's a lot of federal lands in the county. The federal government does not pay taxes, but they do pay the county payments in lieu of taxes. We have, or we have been notified that there's probably, with regard to at least three years, 2015, 16, and 17, there have been either short payments or no payments for those years. And we're asking the county commission to approve, to join a class action lawsuit to try to recover these monies that are due the county. We're not asking for damages. You cannot get damages or punitive damages from the federal government. However, if they owe us to the county, then we have to file this order to recover. So this, we were, we were on a very short deadline. We ended up, we actually had to file this online by Friday. The mayor has done that. But we need the body to ratify that action in order to proceed with this. Like I said, Scott County is only one of many counties that have, that can possibly recover in this lawsuit. So the state of Tennessee, there's 24 other counties in the state of Tennessee that have also joined this lawsuit. But if you'll allow me, I'll just wait and read the resolution. Whereas Scott County has been invited to join a class action lawsuit in the U.S. Court of Federal Claims regarding payments that the federal government was required to pay local governments in lieu of taxes. And whereas the lawsuit is permitted under 31 U.S.C., Section 692 of the PILP, Paying in lieu of Taxes Act. And whereas the lawsuit would focus on fiscal years 2015, 16, and 17, during which it's possible that the county has due approximately $144,645. And whereas it is possible that taxes from other years are due, which may be discovered in further investigation. And whereas legal fees and costs of the lawsuit would come from a recovery if any, and Scott County would not be responsible for any fees or costs. Now therefore be resolved, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby authorizes the Scott County Mayor and the Scott County Attorney to join the class action lawsuit at no cost to the county. And let me emphasize that we're not, we're not, like the resolution says, we're not responsible for any upfront fees. If there's any recovery, then the court costs will come from the recovery.
And there was a notice sent to me this afternoon, and it's forwarded to very close to meeting time tonight. But the fees will be coming out, say we were awarded $145,645, that the, there would be a 33.3% or one-third of the actual award by the court would be the attorney fee. There's also another possible out-of-pocket expenses by the firm, which they're pretty much guaranteeing not to exceed 1% of the amounts recovered. So we're really looking at approximately 34% of the $144,000 going on fees. If we hadn't filed this form, there was no way we would ever recover possible money. So I believe that's win-win for us, even though we're going to pay 34% in commission.
Let me also say, since I was made aware of this, I did preach out to the law firm and to other sources to make sure that they did not think that there would be any backlash from the federal government for us joining this lawsuit. Because this involves money that would be due us anyway, and we're not asking the federal government to pay what they didn't already owe the county. I don't think there would be, or that's what's been represented to me. So I just wanted to let you know that as well.
Another thing, when I read further on this, apparently there was money set aside, there was formulas calculated on determining the amount of taxes that were actually owed from federal properties to the local entities. And apparently, there was also a budget that was placed in those years of 15, 16, and 17, that would not cover those amounts that were come up through, derived from the formulas. So, but they also have federal law that states you cannot spend more than is actually federally allocated. So they weren't able to meet their requirements do, that were derived from the formulas, but they could only pay what was set out in the budget. So that's the monies we've received, which short is for the three years, is $144,000. And that's what we're going after.
I'll make motion for resolution.
I have motion by Commissioner Slaven. Second. Second by Commissioner Jeffers. Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, item number seven, school matters. Did anybody represent a school? I do not see anyone. So we'll move right on to the sheriff's report. Anyone from the sheriff's department? Moving right along. Next is road matters. Mr. King.
I don't have anything that you want. Have any questions?
Seeing no questions for Mr. King, we'll move on. Next on item number 10 is time for the general public. If anyone has any concerns or any other issues they'd like to bring upon the county commissioner's house. Uh...
Yeah, I'd just like to introduce myself.
Next body, state your name.
My name is Carol Agney, and I'm from Clay County. I'm a certified public accountant. I'm actually running for the Tennessee State House of Representatives here in District 38. Scott County is on the end of our district, and I decided to come up here and introduce myself. If you all would like to talk to me, feel free to stay after this meeting, and I'll be happy to talk to you or answer any questions. So thanks for letting me speak.
You're welcome. Thank you. No one else? Item number 11 is the committee reports and resolutions, which we had no reports, so because we didn't have committees at this point. So this time, we'll be going through the committees and have the formal approval of the committees, as we discussed at the workshop. First on the agenda is Parks and Recreation Committee, which you see should be the first one on your list, which states, whereas part of this reorganization, Scott County Board of County Commissioners needs to approve the fullness of internal and statutory committees for the 2018-2022 term. Whereas the Scott County Mayor hereby recommends the following committee and fullness of the commission: Sheila Betchum, David Jeffers, Donnie Bowlen, Chad Markham, Diane Smith, and Sonny Reagan. Now therefore be resolved, if Scott County Board of Commissioners hereby approves these appointments for the 2018-22 term. Also, there's the issue of who's responsible for continuing to maintain these medical records. There are some medical records that are probably involving minors that have to be retained until those minors are at least 18 years old. So there are some records within all of these thousands of families that have to be pulled out and have to be maintained. And there's a fee for that as well. We have been through depositions, both in Mississippi and in Scott County. Mr. Tibbs has been deposed, as has Mr. Strumpf, because they were, Mr. Tibbs was mayor at the time of the transfer. Mr. Strumpf was aware, or was involved in the transaction between Scott County and Pinyott. Now, while the county clearly has no liability for this, the transactional documents, transfer to all the medical records from the county to Pinyott, we are still incurring significant legal fees. And those legal fees go on and on and on, unless we can resolve this. In fact, Mr. Strumpf and I prepared it necessary to travel to Jackson, Mississippi last month. Thankfully, that was not necessary. Right now, trial for the hearing is set for November, and it may require if we can't resolve it, for, don't you shake your head, for us to travel to Jackson, Mississippi. However, we think we have a resolution to cut off all these expenses, and that is the county would be responsible for half of the fees to destroy some of the financial records in the amount of about $2,700. Now, like I said, I don't think we have any liability, but we've got to turn this thing off. I mean, we are incurring significant legal fees, and if we can resolve it for another $2,700, I would strongly recommend to do that. I discussed this with the mayor, and I discussed this with Commissioner Slaven, and I've discussed it with Commissioner Strumpf. All I'm asking for is for the authority to resolve it in that respect, if we can, to act, to shut this thing. If we don't, we're going to continue to incur legal fees to defend this lawsuit out of Mississippi, and it's not cheap. So I'm just asking the commissions authority to allow myself and the county mayor to enter into a settlement, which is really dependent on the other, the other parties of lawsuits, but they have, they agreed to it in principle. But I'm asking the commission to go ahead and give us the authority to resolve it if we can.
Mr. Bay. Now, the balance is around us as far as legal fees, as it goes through? It's running about $20,000 a month. Can we resolve this for $2,700? Yes. And the reason it's, it's running so high is because that we're having to use attorneys that are, that are authorized to practice in bankruptcy. Right. I tried to represent the county myself, because I'm not licensed in Mississippi, nor did I ever anticipate that I would have to. They would not allow me to do that, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'll just start, so we can continue to discuss, but I'll make that motion that we settle this lawsuit.
I'll second that motion. Motion by Commissioner Strumpf, second by Commissioner Day. Any other further discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I will say that having common knowledge of the lawsuit, that Mr. Bay has been very articulate about the aspects of this lawsuit, and however frivolous it may have been, we were incurring tremendous cost, and this is by far the least costly alternative for the county.
Well, what I found was odd during the deposition, was the attorney for the people that actually included us in this lawsuit, pretty much stated, I don't even know why, you guys have been named in this lawsuit, but we are named in it, and it's, like you said, this ficket has been opened, and it's been flowing pretty heavy. So we need to shut that ficket off, and we do have a motion in the second. Any further comments? Voting on roll call.
Bowlen.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Gray.
Aye.
David Jeffers.
Aye.
Jared Jeffers.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Slaven.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Bay, if you would clarify again, that is based on our acceptance of the terms, and is continued upon acceptance of the terms of the other parties involved, which is tentative that at this point, everyone is agreed, but we're still awaiting confirmation. Correct. And the proposal has been drafted, that hopefully will be approved by all parties that will take this term. Well, yes.
Are there any other matters to be discussed? Any announcements?
On September 29th...
And whereas additionally, the airport board recommends the appointment of Jody Morrow to serve on the airport board for the term to begin October one, two thousand and twenty-one. Now therefore be resolved, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners does hereby reappoint Samo Officer serve to the above indicated date, and hereby appoints Jody Morrow to serve until two thousand and twenty-one on the Scott County Board of Authority, Scott County Airport Authority Board, sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Jeffers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Strunk. And that is the relationship that Jody, who's in the audience tonight, is also the son of Commissioner Morrow. And he wanted us to be known before he votes that that is his son. But it is a non-paying position, so there shouldn't be. I appreciate you having that stated. We have the motion in the second, voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next. Whereas the Scott County Board of County Commissioners need to reappoint the beer board to review and act upon beer license applications in the unincorporated areas of Scott County, Tennessee. And whereas the county commissioner, Patty Brown, Sheila Buttram, and Jared Jeffers volunteered to serve on the beer board. Now therefore be resolved, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby approves the appointment of Patty Brown, Sheila Buttram, and Jared Jeffers to the beer board to serve during the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two term. Entertainment a motion, entertain a motion to approve those lists.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Slaven.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Day. Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll be moving on to other matters, which is conducted some of those other matters. But I also have a proclamation that is signed, which is the Scott County proclamation for the Office of Mayor for the Society of Attention Awareness Month, that has September of two thousand and eighteen. I can read that person in front of you, hopefully that time you through it. Will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Second by Donnie Christian Bowden. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have a late entry. They came in, I think, what, Friday afternoon, Mr. Terry? The roadblock request?
Yes.
We have a road, roadblock request. It's writ to read, as students may concern, we get D sixty-three volunteer fire department to light that roadblock as one of our annual fundraiser days on Saturday, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen. The location of the roadblock will be at the Norma sixty-three intersection with three set-up points, Norma Road in front of the Ernie Star Shop and in front of Family Dollar. The time of the roadblock will be from eight till one. Proceeding the roadblock go towards maintenance of the station, trust, and other needs. And the rest of it is just contact information. Any discussion on the roadblock request? If not, on irritation, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, by Commissioner Day.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jeffers. Voting on voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We also have some other matters to be taken care of and all that. How you doing, David?
Okay. The first, you have been provided a copy of a writ resolution. As comes our attention within the last couple of weeks. That is to authorize the county to join a class action lawsuit that would be filed in the U.S. Court of Federal Claims. This is in relation to monies that we think the federal government owes the county for payments in lieu of taxes. The county, there's a lot of federal lands in the county. Federal, the federal government does not pay taxes, but they do pay the county payments in lieu of taxes. We have, or we have been notified that there's probably with regard to at least three years, two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, there have been either short payments or no payments for those years. And we're asking the county commission to approve, to join a class action lawsuit to try to recover these monies that are due the county. We're not asking for damages. You cannot get damages or punitive damages from the federal government. However, if they owe us to the county, then we have to file this in order to recover. So this, we were, we were on a very short deadline. We ended up, we, we actually had to file this online by Friday. The mayor has done that. But we need the body to ratify that action in order to proceed with this. Like I said, Scott County is, is only one of many counties that have, that can possibly recover in this lawsuit, so.
The state of Tennessee, there's twenty-four other counties in the state of Tennessee that are also joining this lawsuit.
But if you'll allow me, I'll just lay in ring resolution. Whereas Scott County has been invited to join a class action lawsuit in the U.S. Court of Federal Claims regarding payments that the federal government was required to pay local governments in lieu of taxes. And whereas the lawsuit is permitted under thirty-one USC Section sixty-nine and two of the PILT, Paying in lieu of Taxes Act. And whereas the lawsuit will focus on fiscal years two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, during which it's possible that the county has due a price of one hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. And whereas it is possible that taxes from other years are due, which may be discovered in further investigation. And whereas legal fees and costs of the lawsuit would come from the recovery, if any, and Scott County would not be responsible for any fees or costs. Now therefore be resolved, the Scott County Board of County Commissioners hereby authorizes the Scott County Mayor and the Scott County Attorney to join the class action lawsuit at no cost to the county. And let me emphasize that we're not, we're not, like, like the resolution says, we're not responsible for any upfront fees. If there's any recovery, then the core costs will come from the recovery.
And there was a notice sent to me this afternoon, forwarded to very close to meeting time tonight. But the fees will be coming out, say we were awarded one hundred and forty-five thousand, six forty-five, that the, there would be a thirty-three point three percent, or one-third of the actual award by the court would be the attorney fee. There's also another possible out-of-pocket expenses by the firm, which they're pretty much guaranteeing not to exceed one percent of the amounts recovered. So we're already looking at approximately thirty-four percent of the one hundred and forty-four thousand going out in fees. If we hadn't filed this form, there was no way we would ever recover the possible money stuff. I believe that's when, when for us, even though we're going to pay thirty-four percent in commission.
Let me also say that since I was made aware of this, I did preach out to the law firm and to other sources to make sure that they did not think that there would be any backlash from the federal government for us joining this lawsuit. Because this, this involves money that would be due us anyway. And we're not asking the federal government to pay what they didn't already owe the county. I don't think there would be, or that's what's been represented to me. So I just wanted to let you know that as well.
Another thing, when I read further on this, apparently there was money set aside. There was formula was calculated on determining the amount of taxes that were actually owed from federal properties to the local entities. And apparently there was also a budget was placed in those years of fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen that would not cover those amounts that were come up through, derived from the formulas. So that they also have federal law that states you cannot spend more than is actually federally allocated. So they weren't able to meet their requirements do, that were derived from the formulas. But they could only pay what was, what was set out in the budget. So that's the monies we've received, which short is for the three years, is one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And that's what we're going after.
I'll make a motion, wait. Resolution.
And motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morrow. Voting on roll call, please.
Welcome.
Aye.
Brown. Aye. Buttram.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Day.
Aye.
Gray.
Aye.
David Jeffers.
Aye.
Jared Jeffers.
Aye.
Lauren.
Aye.
Slaven.
Aye.
Strunk.
Aye.
That covers all of the agenda, unless there's other matters we brought forward.
I am sorry. One other thing that I need to address, Commissioner, and I apologize for the new members. But this does involve Scott County Hospital. It is an issue that never goes away for the county to get on, even though we have conveyed the hospital. But I do need to ask the county commission to give me authority to settle a matter that has been on my radar and other, well, there's other members of this body that have been involved as well. But in May, the county was named in a lawsuit which was part of a pioneer health care bankruptcy proceeding in Jackson, Mississippi. In order to defend the lawsuit, the county was forced to employ a law firm in Jackson, Mississippi that practice in bankruptcy court. The lawsuit, and I'll try to be very brief, involves the storage of thousands of hospital records of medical and financial records that came out of the hospital when the county conveyed the hospital to pioneer health system in two thousand and thirteen. One of the things that's asked is that apparently these records have been stored for the last five years. There are storage fees that are in excess of forty thousand dollars that they're asking the bankruptcy court to determine who's responsible for those storage fees. Also, there's the issue of who's responsible for continuing to maintain these medical records. There are some medical records that are probably involving minors that have to be retained until those minors are at least eighteen years old. So there are some records within all of these thousands of things that have to be pulled out and have to be maintained. And there's a fee for that as well. We have been through depositions, both in Mississippi and in Scott County. Mr. Tibbs has been to co's, as has Mr. Strunk, because they were, Mr. Tibbs was mayor at the time of the transfer. Mr. Strunk was aware or was involved in the transaction between Scott County and Pinyott. Now, while the county clearly has no liability for this, the transactional documents transferred all the medical records from the county to Pinyott, we are still incurring significant legal fees. And those legal fees go on and on and on unless we can resolve this. In fact, Mr. Strunk and I prepared it necessary to travel to Jackson, Mississippi last month. Thankfully, that is not necessary. Right now, trial for the hearing is set for November. And it may require, if we can't resolve it, for help you shape for it, for us to travel to Jackson, Mississippi. However, we think we have a resolution to cut off all these expenses. And that is the county would be responsible for half of the fees to destroy some of the financial records in the amount of about two, twenty-seven hundred dollars. And like I said, I don't think we have any liability, but we've got to turn this figure off. I mean, we are incurring significant legal fees. And if we can resolve it for another twenty-seven hundred dollars, I would strongly recommend to do that. I discussed this with the mayor, I discussed this with Commissioner Slaven, and I've discussed it with Commissioner Strunk. All I'm asking for is for the authority to resolve it in that respect, if we can, to, to shut this down. If we don't, I want to continue to incur legal fees to defend this lawsuit out of Mississippi and it's not cheap. So I'm just asking the commission's authority to allow myself and the county mayor to enter into a settlement, which is really dependent on the other, the other parties of lawsuit. But they have, they agreed to it in principle. But I'm asking the commission to go ahead and give us the authority to resolve it if we can.
Mr. Day.
Now.
What the discipline run us as far as legal fees as it goes through?
It's running about twenty thousand dollars a month.
Can we resolve this for one second, I'm gonna?
Yes. And the reason it's, it's running so high is because we're having to use attorneys that are, that are authorized to practice in bankruptcy court.
Right.
I tried to represent the county myself, because I'm not licensed in Mississippi, nor did I ever anticipate that I would have to. They would not allow me to do that, so.
Mr. Chairman. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll just start, so we can continue to discuss, but I'll make that motion that we settle this lawsuit. I'll say that.
Motion by Commissioner Strunk, second by Commissioner Day. Any other further discussion or questions?
But Chairman, I will say that having common knowledge of the lawsuit, that Mr. Day has been very articulate about the aspects of this lawsuit, and however frivolous it may have been, we were incurring tremendous cost. And this is by far the least costly alternative for the county.
Well, what I found was on during the deposition was the attorney for the people that actually included us in this lawsuit pretty much stated, I don't even know why, you guys have been named in this lawsuit, but we are named in it. And it's, like you said, this figure has been opened, it's been flowing pretty heavy. So we need to shut that sticker off. And we do have a motion to say, any further comments? Voting on roll call.
Bowman.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Buttram.
Aye.
Carson.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Day.
Aye.
Gray.
Aye.
David Jeffers.
Aye.
Jared Jeffers.
Aye.
Laura.
Aye.
Slaven.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Day, if you would clarify again, that is based on our acceptance of the terms. It is dependent on acceptance of the terms of the other parties involved, which is tentative that at this point everyone is agreed, but we're still awaiting confirmation, correct?
And for, and for both orders being drafted, that hopefully will be approved by all parties that will put this in.
Are there any other matters to be discussed? Any announcements?
On September the twenty-ninth, we will be having a benefit dinner at the Scott, the Stryford Community Center for a six-month-old little boy who has had heart surgery. He's had him twelve, about twelve. His first one was at six days old. We're asking him, as many people come out of town once on the same day, it's a museum, a festival. Parents' special. When you get through there, come over and help this young man out. He's, he's struggling.
Are there hours?
Yeah, that's hard at twelve o'clock. They have a variety of dinners. They have a whole pork dinner, a pinto bean dinner, and a chicken and dumpling dinner. It's your choice, it's all, all the dinners are for six dollars. Come out and support right in here, in easy. And above all, in these prayers.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to read off the resolution concerning the state resolution?
We're doing it next month. It was requested by the recipients.
I listen to the words, I care of asking.
That was supposed to be interviewed. Anything else? Was there any entertaining motion for adjournment? Motion by Commissioner Jeffers.
I'll say.
Bowden, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please stand for prayer.
Thank you, Father, thank you for the blessing you give us. Thank you for this county that we live in. It's a, it's an honor and pleasure to represent these citizens. And we just have this special blessing through these commissioners and their families. And we ask that you bring us back safely. We ask these things in your name.
Amen.